You know, you better, you should, you should have used some kind of, you should have. Reverend, you should have just used some hard alcohol instead of beer. I knew it, that was a joke. All you hear was, do a shot.
Tell me about it.
What's up? I didn't get the purple memo today, that's for sure. Color of, color of red of some sort. Jim's kind of pink, Adam Cher's kind of, whatever color that, if we can describe. I'm not gonna, I'm, I, well, you know, let me, look, I'm married to somebody who can tell you exactly what color it is, but I'm not him.
Why is, Terrence, Terrence is about to get, about to get. No. He called, he called me presidential. He's some, he's something. It's got blue in it. Patriotic.
I believe.
Mr. Dark, so Lisa making a presentation today? Lisa making a presentation?
Not unless they show up with one, because I'm not really. Oh, he is? Okay, cool.
I was talking to Chief, he's making a presentation.
Okay, Chris and the G man showed up?
I'm Chris for today.
Oh, God, help us. Have my symphony, sir.
Thank you.
We all going to have beers after.
I'll be there, I'll be there. I got this big girl table at Morse's.
Huh?
I got this table at Morse's.
We could drink it down.
Okay. Well, or we could at least get a six pack.
Yeah, we can drink right down. We'd be right down. What's up, here? How you doing?
Good, you're all right? I'm good.
Can we take? Budget out? We can't do it today? Say it again, say it to my family.
Good afternoon, the Shreveport City Council meeting is now called to order. Going to ask Councilman Taylor Farrell to give the invocation, and I'm going to ask Councilman Butcher to lead us into the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I don't know, I don't know why, but somehow I would do that, I was going to be called to do that.
God told him?
I'm just, look, I'm breaking out the book. Alrighty, so, a- anyway, I just want to share with you that, um, if, if, some of you may or may not, but this is a third, three hundred sixty-five day devotional, it's called Jesus Calling. It's really like Jesus is really speaking to you. The author has such a gift, and so, I, I just want to read today's Jesus Calling, and it says, "Thank me throughout this day for my presence and my peace. These are gifts of supernatural proportions. Every, ever since the resurrection, I have comforted my followers, my followers with these messages. Peace be with you, and I am with you always. Listen as I offer you my peace and presence in full measure. The best way to receive these glorious gifts is to thank me for them. It is impossible to spend too much time thanking and praising me. I created you first and foremost to glorify me. Thanksgiving and praise put you in proper relationship with me, opening the way for my riches to flow into you. As you thank me for my presence and peace, be my, uh, as you thank me for your presence and peace, you appropriate my richest gifts."
If you would, face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Taylor Farrell.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Jackson will be out today. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and city council combined meeting Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilman Brooks. He won't let you?
This passes with six.
Does any council member have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guests not to exceed fifteen minutes?
I do.
Yes, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Barbara Sellers, would you come, please? Ms. Barbara, how you doing? Good to see you, uh, the mic is yours, and thank you for being my guest today.
Thank you so much. Barbara Sellers, uh, Shreveport Firefighters Association, here on behalf of our members here today, um, I would like to say good afternoon to the mayor, and to our Madam Chair, and members of council, and our city leadership. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the men and women of the Shreveport Firefighters Association. I come before you today in the spirit of collaboration. As many of you know, our brothers and sisters in blue have been at the table working on a collaborative raise for their members. While we fully respect their needs and their advocacy, I would kindly remind this everybody that it is imperative for all public safety organizations to be brought to the table when decisions of this magnitude are made. When we discuss public safety, the message must be clear, every branch of public safety matters, and every organization deserves the opportunity to have its needs heard and considered. This is not the first time we've stood in these chambers facing a similar situation. In July of twenty twenty, we encountered comparable change, challenges, but through open discussion and fairness and strong leadership here in the council chambers, uh, we were able to reach an equitable resolution, one that honored all who serve. I am confident that this same inclusive and balanced outcome can be achieved here today. Our members hold the utmost respect for our brothers and sisters in blue. We understand fully that the public safety as a whole has evolving needs, and we under, we stand united in the belief that a safer Shreveport depends on us all. As a thirty-five-year veteran of this department, I have witnessed firsthand how organizational changes and staffing challenges have shaped our service. In the nineteen nineties, it was far more common to have a four-person crews on our trucks. Years later, the commitment was made to staff upwards of nine full crews at all times, but around two thousand fifteen, firefighter staffing could no longer keep pace with the operational demands, and then COVID struck, bringing even more strain on our workforce. In the last five years, our department has endured several sentinel events, yet through every challenge, our administration and our members have worked tirelessly to keep every station open and to uphold our promise to protect the citizens and visitors of Shreveport. I would be remiss, however, if I did not acknowledge that we've been operating at minimum staffing levels that do not even meet NFPA seventeen, uh, ten standards. Still, our firefighters continue to answer every call, they always have, and they always will. All we ask here today is that our five hundred and fifty-plus members be considered whenever public safety is discussed and prioritized in the city. And on behalf of our entire membership, I want to thank each and every council member who has consistently supported public safety, as well as our mayor and our C A O for their leadership. I also want to note that our members' dues will continue to support professional development by bringing in top instructors across the United States and Canada at no cost to the city, to ensure that Shreveport firefighters remain among the best trained in the nation. Thank you all for your time, your service, and your continued commitment to public safety for us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers, um, Ms. Sellers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming today, and, uh, tell all your brothers and sisters, the entire city, that when the dust is settled, I, I believe that every, all of our brothers and sisters that works for the city of Shreveport will be satisfied. And we're just not working for one, we're working for all. I've been in coun, in conversation with Councilman Butcher and other members of the council, and, uh, they have the same feeling that you have just displayed by reading what you brought, and thank you for coming, and just know that, uh, through the help of the Lord, all things are possible if we believe. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Councilman Green, thank you all.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sellers, is it Ms. Sellers?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what, what is your role with the, with the fire department?
I'm the president of the Shreveport Firefighters Association, and I'm a captain EMS supervisor with the department.
So you're the president of their union?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I've been up here three years, this is the first time we've met. So this proposal was given to me by the police unions, given to all seven of us. If you would turn in your proposal, I'd be happy to review it, just like I did this one.
I believe the fire chief has already done that, we work collaboratively with our administration, we meet once a month, and I know that our fire chief has been at the table advocating for our members, and we are aware of the work that he has done.
So you, the fire department has put in a proposal for a pay raise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, has, has anyone else seen it? You have?
Yeah, I told you, Gary, that we were working on one, and to give us until the budget amendments. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I've seen it.
I don't have that one.
Yeah, you do, we all seven got it.
I didn't.
It was, it was, oh, in front of you.
I didn't get it.
Ma'am.
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Sellers, did you have something else that you want to say in reference to that?
No, ma'am, not unless there's any questions for me.
Okay, all right there, Councilman Butcher.
Captain Sellers, thank you, uh, thank you for coming up, um, I'm, I'm probably the only member on the council that was a member of Local Five Fourteen, so I know, uh, I know what y'all do, and, uh, how you advocate. It's a little different, I think, with the fire union and the police union, because y'all work a little bit closer with, with the fire chief, um, and there's nothing wrong with that, but, um, I know that Chief Reese has talked to me on numerous occasions, um, and there is a comprehensive plan that includes both fire and police that is floating around. We, we're just checking the numbers, we want to make sure that all the numbers that Chief Reese sent in match up with, with what we think, and that's the same thing that I think Ms., uh, uh, Jackie's doing with the, uh, Ms. White's doing with the, uh, with the police proposal as well, making sure that all the numbers add up. But I would suspect whenever we have our budget meeting, or we vote on the budget, uh, in December, that, uh, that y'all will be included as well, so, thank you for coming and speaking, and, and thank you for, uh, you know, how many runs do y'all make a year now?
One thing I can tell you is they increase every year, we will be upwards of forty-plus thousand this year, at the end of the year hasn't gotten here, so I'd be remiss to say.
Fifty thousand? Chief Wastella said fi, uh, close to fifty.
I don't know that we've hit fifty yet, but we may hit it, yeah, I mean, based on the numbers.
And just where, where people understand what NFPA is, that's the, that's the standard that is set by the government on the amount of firefighters that you need on a fire truck, and we have been riding short since twenty fifteen, is that correct?
We have not been able to fully staff trucks on a committed level since that time, that was the time under Chief Wolverton's administration that we moved into a form of mandated overtime due to staffing challenges, and since that time, uh, we're very grateful for the support that we've been able to get from our city decision-makers to keep every station open, but it has forced overtime to do that.
And another issue that I think that the fire department has, as well as the police department, is our footprint is so large, I mean, you can go from North Market Fire Station Number Two, all the way down to Fire Station Twenty-two, and it's a twenty-five-mile run, and a lot of these outlined stations, three men may be on a fire truck for a considerable amount of time before help gets to them.
That is exactly true.
And for those that have not ridden out with the fire department before, I would strongly, strongly, strongly suggest going and ride with them and see what goes on when there's a working house fire, not just the EMS calls, but the working house fire, you've got to have at least probably ten to fifteen people just to effectively start fighting the fire. So, um, you know, I think it's critical, and I, I don't want anyone to think on the fire department that the council as a whole was trying to omit y'all, because I've even talked to the, uh, police union president of S P O A, and told him that it was my intent to do that, as well as the last time I talked to him last week, there was my intent to include y'all as well, so.
Thank you so much.
We'll see what we can do, and, uh, of course, we do have budget restraints, and we need to make sure that we, uh, that we have the money to cover anything that we do, so, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Sellers, thank you for coming today, I just want to let you know that we did hear you loud and clear, and we are very thankful for the Shreveport Fire Department, and all of our other employees as well, so as we go through this budget process, we won't leave anyone out, so thank you again, and happy Thanksgiving to your family.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Bowman, thank you.
Ms. Sellers, I think there, there is, just as my colleagues have said, a general consensus of us to work in collaboration for what the mayor's office has presented, and, and later, Mr. Dark will be able to speak to that, um, so if you remain in the chamber, then you will be able to hear the comments that he will make. Um, we issued, um, a press release earlier to thank the, uh, administration for what they've laid out as a blueprint, it gives us the opportunity to continue to deliberate on behalf of all of the employees of the city of Shreveport.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Green, you have anything else for your guests?
No.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other council members have any other distinguished guests? I do want to say at this time, congratulations to Booker T. Washington High School Football Team, uh, as they head to the playoffs on today, yay. And I do want to say kudos to Cattle Parish students as their tests, as their school scores have come in, the performance scores, and you've seen a lot of our schools have made significant gains, so I want to say kudos to Cattle Parish school system as well. Yes, Councilman Green.
Uh, I, I would also just like to say, um, congratulations to, um, Cam Street, because if my granddaughter heard you call Booker T. and I didn't tell y'all about Cam Street, then they also gonna.
Thank you there, uh, Reverend Green, from an alumni, thank you, thank you.
Is this double teaming? This is sound like double teaming to me right here. I see your cousin in the back of the room.
It's my twin.
Uh, I think we also see, uh, Representative Walters that came in, how you doing, Representative Walters?
How you doing?
What's up, Justin, Mr. Dixon, and Mike, how y'all doing today? Okay, so, any other council members? So, Marson, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's happy.
Mrs. Dark, uh, do you have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guests not to exceed fifteen minutes?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I'm not really sure quite how the protocol is, I know Chief Smith has a, has a presentation, is that now, or is that the next, the next piece of this?
It was now, if you had any presentations.
Come on, Chief.
Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a request that Mr. Dark had a statement that he needed to make.
Oh, that's gonna come next.
I'll, I'll do that as soon as this part's done.
Oh, okay.
We got this order over here.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
I just want y'all to appreciate how short I'll be after fifteen minutes of this.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Chief.
Good afternoon, everyone.
We got five minutes.
See there, I knew you.
It's Friday.
I knew you was gonna say that. Okay, well, this is the, uh, normal report that I make, uh, once a month to you all, I think all of you may have your copies by now, and the first slide, please. First slide is our homicide data, and this does include, uh, the ones that have happened, uh, this week on Clyde Fant Parkway, uh, that puts us at thirty-eight, uh, for the year, we were at forty-six last year this time. So, uh, still, things are declining or trending behind where we were last year. Uh, bound twenty-four or so of those thirty-eight are closed, so our clearance rate is around sixty-three point one, the national, uh, average is at fifty-eight point six percent, so our closure rate is above the national average for homicide data. Next slide you'll see is our shots fired, uh, call, uh, for the year, we're setting at eighteen hundred and forty-two, uh, last year this time, we were at twenty-two eighty, uh, there again, uh, continuing that downward trend that we hope to even get better as, as time progresses. And I have a new, uh, person helping me here today, I don't know if most of you have met him, this is Mr. John Fox, uh, he is our statistician, our analyst, that keep up, uh, with this data, and he's a civilian, he's not a police officer, so, any data that you get, uh, from S P D, uh, this is the gentleman, Mr. John Fox, whom, uh, you received that data, data from.
Madam Chair, since we, since we've got him here, I've got a question, I asked the chief this last, uh, time, on the shots fired, I, I see a lot in major notifications that we get, that when a house is shot up or something, it says vandalism, are those switched over to shots fired?
Uh, shots fired, anytime a shot is fired and is reported to us as that, it would go into this statistical data, uh, what you're seeing the vandalism, uh, would be the final disposition on the report, but shots fired would still be recorded as shots fired.
So if somebody calls nine-one-one and says, "My house has been shot up," y'all get there, it comes in as shots fired, y'all reported as shots fired.
That is correct.
But then it transitions into a vandalism because nobody was hit.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So let me be clear, Chief, because it was, it was puzzling me, is that if I'm in my house, and someone unloads with the intent of doing harm, or sending a message, and the bullets go inside my house but don't strike anyone, are you saying that that is dis, declassified as a vandalism, and instead of a type of an assault?
Well, as far as I know, it would be classified as that vandalism because of the damage done to, to the resident. Now, during the course of the investigation, and everything is looked at, that classification could in fact change.
Fair enough, thank you.
Yes, sir.
On, on last night in my district, Red River Critic Union, that's on, um, um.
Seventieth Street.
Seventieth Street, Seventieth Street.
It's in Jewella.
And Jewella got shot up, so how would you classify that, and I don't know if you could give me an update on it, but, I mean, their whole building is like shot up, so how would that be classified under?
It would fit both categories, on the shots fired, it would still be recorded as that, and the damage that's done to the facility would be a vandalism, yes.
Was, was anybody injured on that, or do you know?
Not to my knowledge, none reported to me.
Were they, the building is shot up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right, uh, the next slide you'll see is the actual shootings, this is where someone was actually hit by a projectile. Two hundred and three reported this year in two thousand and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty reported for the same time period in two thousand and twenty-four, and, uh, looking at the graph, the scale, you'll still see, uh, decline, which is, you know, what we hope for, and hope to get that better. Uh, next slide you'll see is, uh, the criminal reports, and this is encompass, uh, uh, several categories, sex crime, as I pretty much say each time, the numbers appear to be up, but there's a lot of reasoning behind that, that does not necessarily mean more people are being sexually assaulted, uh, but more are being, uh, reported, we capturing more of that particular data. Vehicle thefts are down, one, one thousand and ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-five, eleven thirty-five, and, uh, twenty-five, twenty-four, armed robberies, we had fifty-three reported for the same time period, year prior to that, sixty-seven. Burglaries, eleven hundred and seventy-five for twenty-five, fourteen hundred and seventy for twenty-four. Vehicle burglaries, eight forty-seven in twenty-five, one thousand fifty-three in twenty-four. Carjackings, twelve reported in twenty-five, eighteen reported for the same time period in twenty-four. There again, looking at categories for twenty-five, you'll see a decline. And I know sometimes, uh, it's difficult with things that are still happening that you hear about on a daily basis, and particularly, if you're a victim of some crime, it is hard to accept the fact that things are getting better, they're on a decline. Uh, the next slide you'll see, uh, criminal traffic reports, you'll see assaults and batteries, twenty-five thirty-eight for twenty-five, and twenty-six sixty-nine for twenty-four. Domestic violence is slightly up, twenty-five, twenty-five for twenty-five, twenty-three thirty-eight, uh, for twenty-four, and I contribute some of that, uh, to the efforts that have been made by the council and others. And I contribute some of that to the efforts that have been made by the council and others to make it much, much easier and more simpler for victims of domestic violence to seek some relief. Major accidents, this is one that I mention each time that's extremely concerning. It appears that your chances, in some cases, are likely that you'll be injured as a result of an accident than you will anything else. 1228 reported to us, major accidents in '25, and 1168 the time period last year. Minor accidents, this is where, you know, there's minor injuries or no injuries at all. 7578 reported for this time period this year, and 7344 for the same time period last year. So motor vehicle related incidents appear to be on the increase. Next slide that you see is vehicle related also, and this is across our entire parish. We've had 42 fatality accidents so far this year, and a great deal of them, probably a third or so are due to pedestrian, extremely alarming, very, very alarming, in '25 for the same time period last year. And what you'll find pretty common in most of these involving pedestrians, they are not at intersection or crosswalks, they're just in the middle of a block, somewhere where someone is crossing the street or walking in the street or that, that sort of thing. We do operate off some state funded grants, the Louisiana Highway Safety Commission, to make our streets safe and enforce city and state law relative to vehicle traffic, which also includes people driving under influence. So quite often throughout the year, we have driver's license checkpoint, insurance checkpoints, and DWI checkpoints, and make a considerable amount of arrests, arrests to make our cities safe. Last year, I believe, the city of Shreveport ranked number one in the state for the amount of arrests for driving under the influence, and we on target this year to also lead the state in the amount of arrests for people driving under the influence. The next slide you'll see, I know it constantly stays on your mind about our move away from 1234 Texas Avenue, and not to have to go through all this, but we're probably 90, I don't know, 98% moved out of that building. It's about 20 or so of us still remaining, and I would think within the next couple of weeks, we would be able to relocate. One of the things that have slowed it down, it's not just as easy as picking up your house and moving. We provide vital services to our community, and we do our best to coordinate that so services are never interrupted. That today, one service end at one location, it also has began at another one. So we're making great, great progress. During that time, over the course of years, my 46 years nearly of being here, there have been rumored that our prior governor, Governor of Louisiana, Governor Jimmy Davis, the prior City of Shreveport Public Safety Commissioner and the Public Service Commissioner for the state of Louisiana, was once a city employee, and the desk that he used during those times still remain. Last week, had opportunity to get Dr. Gary Joyner, I'm pretty quite sure you recognize that name, to come over because I had located a piece of furniture that I thought belonged to Governor Jimmy Davis. He positively confirmed that that is the desk that Governor Jimmy Davis used when he worked at the city of Shreveport. And I asked, "Well, how are you able to identify this desk above any other?" He said that he sit and talked with then Public Service Commissioner, Public Safety Commissioner George Doratoys, and that was the desk that he was sitting in at the time that he inherited from Governor Davis. And I said, "Still, that doesn't mean much to me. What's unique about this desk?" He says the copper feet on it is very rare, and this is the desk that I sit and saw and talked with the prior commissioner with, and the desk still has those copper feet and is in relatively good shape. But the irony about it all just goes to show you how good things were built back 50 years ago. Someone has been sitting at that desk, working on it every day since then. But we've identified and we have it, and we plan to try to preserve that in some fashion or another, you know, as a great mark in history. The final slide that you'll see here in my presentation, last week, we had the wonderful opportunity to graduate 12 cadets for the Shreveport Police Department. So we are extremely excited and happy about that, and they'll begin their four months or so formal training riding with veteran officers, and after that, they will begin to solo on their own, and we are processing, as we speak, for the next academy class to begin in early 2026. And we are praying and hoping that we get even more than, than this class. So we're always hiring. If you know anyone that's Bill Blue, please send them my way. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Councilman Butcher.
Chief, on the, is this the first time you've given us the minor accidents number?
It is. You, I just give you the fatality data. This is the first time I've given that.
That, that number is staggering.
Correct.
And I think that the amount of time that it takes our officers to have to deal with that many accidents, have y'all thought at all or looked into that company that's doing like, like they're doing somewhere in St. George or someplace like that that writes the non, the non-major accident report?
They did. They're doing it in the city of New Orleans also, and I really need an opinion from the city attorney's office as well. We can contract such a company or not because state law is clear that you'll report an accident to the local law enforcement agency, and they will investigate it. So I just don't know how other cities get around that. And to couple with that, there's always more than meets the eye. This company gets paid pretty significantly for what they do. So right now, you know, an accident report for us, there's no charge for the officer investigating the accident. The only charge is to receive a copy of the accident. Well, an additional charge would be added to that accident report to fund the company doing that, and I just don't know if we're really ready for that yet. But I'm really open to any discussion about it.
I just think with that many accidents, especially in, in my area of town and, and area, or District 6, I assume that a lot of their calls are accidents on Ure Drive.
That's correct.
Down there.
Yes, sir.
My concern has always been if you got two officers working a wreck at Ure and Regal, and you have an armed robbery going on, on Norris Ferry Road, that's a long way if you've got officers tied up way down there.
Yes.
So I think it's something that we really, and, and Mr. City Attorney, I would like for you to research that for us and see what the legalities of it are and how these other municipalities are doing it.
Will do.
Thank you. And then Chief, I would like to at least have a conversation about it.
Sure, we happy to, we happy to. I want to report one other thing before I take my seat, because we always curious of whether our endeavors are being effective for the city of Shreveport or not. So our first test probably was the Monk House Drive substation in Council District F, I must say. What we've seen since it's been open, you know, monitoring it month by month, we're seeing demand for service decrease in the area, and actually more people are calling or coming to the substation. So I find that to be very interesting, and certainly that is the hope that you hope for, less need for police services throughout the entire region. But more people are walking in, getting immediate answers from supervisors, calling in. At that substation is where our tail serve is located, where there's an incident where you just need a police report, not necessarily a police response. Someone can walk in, sit at a desk, and actually get a police report made from civilian operators that are in the next room, or they'll sit with them to make the report. That is working out extremely well.
Councilman Green.
Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea when the, those cameras that the Committee of 100 so graciously bought, do you have any idea when those cameras will be going up?
No, I don't exactly, but soon, my RTC personnel, we've talked about it, the locations have been decided. So it's gonna be very, 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 very soon, and we're gonna do some unique creative watching out in that area. I firmly believe it's gonna be very effective. Talking with my command staff just about an hour ago, and I gave them my vision for those cameras and how it's gonna interact with that substation that was there, and they was quite excited about it, and we're gonna be taking that all over our community.
If, how many were we supposed to be putting up, Chief?
I think it was 12, I believe. Yes, sir.
Just know until District A, they got their substation going, we could let them, let them borrow one of them until they get, you know, balance if they need to.
Kind of order.
Thank you all for the, for the funding and support of our real-time crime center. Whenever there's been a need to purchase our new equipment to make available to put up in strategic locations, we've been able to do it. So thank you all so much for that support.
Chief, I do have two areas of concern in my district. So Mr. Green need to go ahead on and give us those cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Give them. We don't want to borrow anything, but we'll buy our own.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Around, in the MLK area, there is a specific time where there are some shots fired calls, and so I will give you those streets after council meeting.
Okay.
That I actually like for you all to pay some attention to. Also too, it is the holiday season, and so we know it's a time that we need to inform our residents as well that those of you that go out shopping, to please not leave your items in the car where they're visible to the public. I think that's an area of concern, and to please lock your doors, not to attract those individuals. You're going to see probably a number of people walking in parking lots or whatever, asking for a number of things. So you're gonna have to proceed with caution in, in doing so. It does not matter where you live. It, it does not matter what you drive. It just, you just need to, you know, err on the side of caution. So I'm just hoping that our patrols will, will pick up since it is the holiday. I don't want you to give us any plans. I just think there just needs to be that level of awareness that is so. And I'm with, Councilwoman and I were looking at the numbers of accidents that we have, and we realized that speeding is a.
Yes, ma'am.
Is a issue in a lot of these, and also our pedestrians that are getting hit, and sometimes we see those are hit and run. Can we have those particular areas? Because I do want to also check the lighting in that area. I know that we set aside money for those, for areas within the city, and so we do want to make sure that those areas are well lit as well.
I will provide all that for you, because certainly the majority of the pedestrians, especially at night, that's what the driver said, "I never saw that person until."
Right.
Almost contact was made. Here, sometime in the beginning of December, we'll be taking our message to the airways of public service awareness, bringing back to the forefront of people's mind that we approaching our major shopping season, and even though we have a plan in place to try to help with things, we want people to be aware of what they can do themselves to avoid being a victim of crime. So that'll be coming very, very soon. RTC, Real-Time Crime Center, we are monitoring 2,225 cameras around our city. It seem to be growing and growing and growing on, on a weekly basis. And thank you for community, for integrating your cameras with us and helping to support this effort, because it's definitely making a difference.
Thank you so much, Chief. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right.
Nothing for you, Chief. Listen, I know you got stuck in the garage last week for about two hours. Had it not been for Mr. Clark today, I couldn't get in. My clicker is not working, so I don't want to stay here tonight. So could you call whoever is, oh, that Mr. Whitehorn or somebody so that I, my clicker wouldn't work? But I think Mr. Clark would let me in out of the rain, and if you could get that, I really would appreciate it.
I'm sorry, he acts like that's under council control.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't.
Shelley, would you please make sure that the garage is working?
Because she had to stay there. I thought I was gonna have to come get her. She had to stay there for two hours the other day. Brought us some water.
Mr. Dark, do you have any communications of the mayor relative to city business?
Yes, Madam Chair. Do you really have two things for those watching who are wondering where the mayor is? He is doing a eulogy for a friend of his who passed away. He's apparently been a friend since childhood, so he regrets he's not available to be here today.
Let's send him our condolences.
I do want to put on record a little bit about the discussion that Captain Sellers brought in a few minutes ago. Eight days ago, we finished up budget hearings with you all, and there were two things that came out at the end of those that we've been trying to address since then. One of those was equipment, and we have provided some information to you about some things we're thinking about there. But the key issue today is pay, and what we tried to do was look for revenue that we, that we could budget safely, that we could do for everyone, because our, our position very strongly held is that if there are going to be pay increases for city employees next year, they are going to be for everyone. It is, is clear that public safety folks have an extraordinary role to play in this community, but so do the folks that work in water and sewer, or picking up sanitation, or all the other departments of the city. And we, our position has been from the beginning that, that all means all, and that's what we intend to do here, and that's what we provided you yesterday. The numbers are not large that we were able to provide. I mean, clearly, if what you wanted to do was give an increase to only one part of the community, one part of our employee base, those numbers could be bigger. But because we are trying to do everyone, we, we ended up leaving numbers for 3% in April, plus a doubling of the uniform allowance for public safety folks, plus increases for the, same increases for the classified and other city employees. We really have, we still have lots of time to, to discuss all this with you. Budget doesn't have to pass till the 15th. The likelihood is you're gonna pass it on the 9th. We want to work with you. It's why we tried to get this information in your hands as quickly as we could, because if nothing else, it's a starting point for, for conversation, and, and we will all work together, and, and by December 9th, we will figure out what the best thing we can do with the money we have. Our position is we, you know, we know that it is very difficult for anyone on, on the elected bodies to, to consider fee increases, tax increases, whatever else. So we're working with what we have. The reason this money was not in the budget to begin with was because I really was hoping that we could save a little bit of the oil and gas money for later in the year because things happen. But given your, your desire and our desire to try to see what we could do in pay, we, we're going to be a little less conservative there and, and provide some additional funding for this. But again, we want to work with you. You all understand that you want to provide funds for everyone. We all have discussed over and over about the need for us, our, our strong desire that we try to do this without tapping our reserve, because if you do that, it's not recurring money. And so that's why we are where we are. We, we look forward to working with you. We've got almost three weeks before your next council meeting, and we'll be happy to meet with you, discuss things with you, run alternatives with you, so that when we get to the end, we will have done the best we can for both the city finances and for our employees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Dark, thank you. Just for transparency, the memo that you prepared for the council and sent to us yesterday, I'm assuming you, you and the mayor prepared it, it was sent from the mayor, but.
Definitely a group project.
I'm sure that it had, had your, your hands on it as well. So if you wouldn't mind, read. So if you wouldn't mind, read paragraph three in the bold letters about the pay raise. This is concerning, and then I'll ask you a couple of questions about it.
Just give him, tell me where it is, 'cause I did, I brought the news release and did not bring the-
It's the pay proposal on your agenda.
Okay, the, the pay proposal essentially is 3% for fire and police civil service folks effective April 1st. It is a doubling of the uniform allowance from $400 to $800. It is a 3% increase for other city employees effective April 1st, and a little bit of money because we're in the middle of a salary survey that I believe is going to find some positions that are, that are well below parity, and we're gonna try to rectify at least some of those issues with that, with those funds. And that's, that adds up, I think, to about 4.4 million. And that's, that's what we tried to find money for. We looked several places. The places we looked were a little bit, going back to what we're transferring this year to the, from the Riverfront Fund, asking you to rededicate the portion of the public safety fund that is currently going to streets. We have a little ARP money left over from the Ford Street project that we believe is, this would be a good one-time use for, and additionally, the additional oil and gas money.
Since, since you don't have the memo, I'm gonna read what, what my concern is then. Pay proposal on your agenda. First, I wanna address the pay proposal placed on your agenda this week to give SPD officers and only them a 10% increase. While we applaud the intent of the proposal, we do not believe the city has the recurring funds to adopt this proposal. We also believe that any pay proposal should include all city employees, not just police. Respectfully, we believe that the proposal, even if it were to be adopted, dramatically understates its cost. A 10% pay increase to SPD officers would cost $5.2 million, not the 3.189 million listed on the legislation fact sheet. To give an identical increase to the fire service members would cost another 4.8 million. Granting it to all employees would balloon that total even further. There is not, there is no current recurring fund source that would provide for these increases. Therefore, we urge you to consider the pay proposal included in this memorandum rather than the 10% for police. So first off, I support the 10% for police, if we can fund it. And that's what we've got Ms. White looking into, we've had the city attorney looking into it, we've had our internal auditor looking into it, running the numbers to make sure, and then I think they've been communicating with you. But my concern is, where did this difference from 3.189 come from to 5.2 million?
Councilman, I can only speak for my numbers. I don't know where theirs came from. What I can tell you is that how I came up with, with the number you've seen is that I took the October 31st payroll for fire and police, and for the classified folks, in fact, said, okay, how much did we pay that pay period and annualize that? For, for police, it's, it's, essentially it annualizes at 5, 52 million. For fire, a little over 48. So that's where the 5.2% for, 5.2 million for 10% for one and 4.8 for the other comes from. I do know that the resolution in front of you does not appear to provide increases for jailers and PCOS and vehicle techs and the folks that are not specifically ranked. That may be where some of the difference is, but I do not know otherwise.
Is there, that pay proposal, did it, Councilman Brooks, did it include PCOS and vehicle techs?
I presented the pay proposal that was given to me by the police union.
Okay, so we don't know if it includes that or not?
I do not, but I do remember, while we're on the subject, a few weeks ago, Mr. Dark, you either said it on the record to the media, "We have no money in 2026 for any, 2026 for any pay raises." Is that not what you said?
That was my position.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be clear that in the absolutely perfect ideal world of budgeting, we would be safer keeping some of this money for a rainy day next year. But I will also tell you that we listen to you. Your, your position is we would like to do whatever we can to provide funding for equipment and for pay for next year. And so we went back and looked again and said, okay, can we make different assumptions? Can we scrape the barrel to get a few things if we need to, that maybe we wouldn't have looked at the first time? That's where we, that's how we got from here to there. We weren't trying to mislead anybody then, not trying to mislead anybody now. We're just simply saying, if you're going to do this, this is about all I believe I can scrape up. Obviously, you're looking for other places, and we may find some, who knows?
You challenged me, so I'm looking.
Well, I assumed you would be, even if I didn't challenge it. But, you know, but, but I mean, bottom line, at some point, everybody wants to do the biggest thing they can do, and everybody wants to do the responsible thing. And at some point, we'll figure out what that number is. And if it's what we have here, okay. And if it's a bigger number and we found additional revenue, okay there, too.
I think that my, my biggest concern is, and, and by the way, I read that, and I just wanna make everybody understand, that was the mayor's words.
Those were definitely the mayor's words.
So when I read that, it was a little bit concerning to me. And then I also need to know, on the proposal right now that we've proposed, and it's on the agenda for a first read, do we have a funding source linked to that? And I think that maybe a city attorney or a Ms. White, do we, do we have a, a funding source to fund, if the $3.1 million fee is accurate, do we have a funding source for it?
Pull your mic down.
You, you would not, there is, there is nothing in the resolution that says one-
That's what I'm asking.
One way or the other, how this would be paid for.
Is there supposed to be something in the resolution that dedicates where the money go, comes from, other than the general fund?
Not necessarily, I mean, but, but I think bottom line is, if you were to choose to approve it, you would be assuming that we're going to add at least that much money, or whatever the number actually was, to the police budget, and you would be tasked to find, you know, either cuts or sources to find them. I mean, I don't know that it's mandatory that it says how it's paid for, but you're certainly correct to ask.
Well, I, I wanna go on record, and I've told the mayor this, and I talked to Mr. Dark after this email was sent out yesterday. In, in my perfect world, the, the raise would be exactly what's on the police raise, and then I would try my best to get, it's comparable. In fact, the, the raise that the, the fire chief has sent out is very, very comparable to this, and I, and I like it. And then we also need to include our other employees, because I don't think if anybody sat through these budget hearings and heard Mr. Morgan speak, we also heard Mr. Sneed speak, we've heard Mr. Green speak, we've heard Mr. Clark speak about additional planners. We've got so many different, and, and our city courts, we're talking about how they were so underpaid. I mean, we have, I think, Chairwoman Taylor, in some of the work that we've been doing together, pulled a list of, how many employees do we have that make less than $15 an hour?
98.
We have 98 employees in the city of Shreveport that make less than $15 an hour. And these are skilled employees that, you know, their insurance is probably taking the majority of their pay. And I just can't overlook the rest of the employees. Of course, fire, I've been accused of being a, you know, fire is my, is my favorite and all this other stuff, but fire and police, in my opinion, like what Captain Sellers said, they're brothers and sisters, and they need each other. They really do.
Solid waste not gonna pick up your trash.
And then-
Thank you.
You know, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of-
Brandon not gonna get you in the water?
No, no, I'm talking in general about just the fire and police part of it.
Which is-
But, but the other employees definitely have to have a raise. There's no way that they can survive with the amount of money that they're being paid. And I, three and a half years ago, had a water leak in front of my house on Christmas Eve. Those guys were out there all night long, working in the 30-degree temperature to get our water cut back on. And, and I appreciate your service, I do. And I, you know, it's a hard job, so, and it's a hard line for the, for us as a council, as well as for the mayor, because we, look, all of us have other jobs. We are all part-time. So we depend on these right, these people right here, and the mayor, and the CAO, to guide us in the direction that we need to go, because we can't be an expert on everything. But what I do hear is I hear Mr. Sneed, Mr. Morgan, Captain Sellers, Chief Reese, the fire chief, both unions, Mr. Borderline and, and Mr. Carter, both telling us, we are in trouble if we don't get our employees some pay. So I think I have been tasked with trying to find that any way I can, and I think we've still got a little bit of work to do, but we've got some time.
Yes.
And every one of us sitting up on this horseshoe have had discussions about this. But I, I, I'm a little concerned with the, the discrepancy in the 5.1 and the, and the three, or 5.1 and the 3.1 on the police. So we need to get some clarity on that. And I'm sure that Chief Guastello can probably explain that to me. So, but anyway, I, I appreciate you letting me talk, and I just wanted to, to get some clarity on that.
Mr. Dark.
Well, to wrap, to wrap it up from my side, in the same way that we are all in this together, trying to work together with you, all our employees, we are all in with them too.
Correct.
I mean, we, we all have a responsibility to make sure that everybody who, who works here, and every department head who leads them, has the resources, or at least within the money we have, the resources necessary to do the best job they possibly can. And that's why we're very clear, we do not support a pay increase that is just for one part of city government, and, and we would certainly urge you not to do that today.
I think the majority of us are very clear on that. So I have a, a couple of questions that I want to ask you.
Sure.
What year did we stop merit increases for employees?
You got, you got merit increases in '24, but not '25. They had not been done for a number of years before '24.
Okay.
And, and one of our discussions in putting this together was whether we would do simply merit increases and not a cost of living increase. And we ended up deciding to do a cost of living increase instead, partly because it raises the starting pay.
Okay.
And, and that is helpful for a number of things, not just trying to get us closer to $15 an hour, but it's also helpful for recruiting. So that's why, instead of us, I mean, it actually costs us a tiny bit more to do 3% cost of living in April than it does to do steps all year. But we really felt like it was important to try to get, to try to do what we could to bring the, the existing beginning pay up as much as we could.
So what we're looking at now is, what we're looking at providing in April is a cost of living increase, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I do want us to research and factor in, and I'm gonna ask this of human resources as well, to the yearly merit increases for employees at, in each department. I want us to look at that. In order for, and just, just hear me out.
Sure.
If we're looking at benefit analysis of other individuals or other companies or orga-, governmental organizations within our region, then we have to see how their systems are working. In this factor, let's, let's take the parish. Parish may provide, I guess, a yearly merit increase after they do their annual evaluations, and that hasn't been something that has been done at the city of Shreveport for all employees. So actually, when it gets to the point that when we're providing a raise, we're looking at years down the line, that in between, that they're not getting anything at that particular point. So I do think that we need to look at, how do we factor those things back in? And so that's why the driving of economic development is so important, because we need people to buy in our city so we can drive revenue here in this area. This is why equipment and, and, and ensuring that our employees have the necessary equipment that they need in order to do their job, because we want to ensure the constant and the, the investment in the employees that we have that are working for us. So that's the thing that I'm, that I'm looking at, and so that's why the benefit analysis is so important to me, to look at that, but also enacting merit increases and how we do that step by step. You know, if it's just at a little while, if it's at, at 2%, and this is gonna be standard 2% across the board, and looking at these employees, then it's just a thought process, but it's one that we need to look at for sure.
Couple of other-
The other thing, hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
The other thing that, that I'm also concerned with is morale, employee morale. And I think that this council, that I would say for this council, that we have tried overwhelmingly to provide for the departments that are here, everything that we can in order for them to effectively do their job. Probably, as you have said, maybe have stepped over the line a little bit in being aggressive advocates for them, because when we get up every day, and when they leave their homes, and they come into the city of Shreveport, they are the first line of defense. They are who the public make contact with. And if they don't have what they need, if they, if they aren't equipped in order to properly do their job, then they're not gonna be very good salespeople of the city of Shreveport. And these are our foot soldiers, and these are the individuals that sell our city. And so if they're happy with their, where everybody's not gonna be happy with, we all have our days. But overall, if they're happy, they're the best salesmen for the city of Shreveport's, men and women. And so those things, that may not be such a big deal to everybody else, but I worked in customer service. And when you talk about the customer being happy, supplying what is needed for our employees is happy. So let me, let me say this to you all. We have been looking at this stuff for months, and how do we do this? And we have some nice things that are coming down the pipe for the city of Shreveport. And so we're looking at, how do we consistently grow our city, and that means you. So when we're in budget hearings, we're paying attention and listen to what is being said, because you all are out there in the yard. We're not, we're not down in the manhole when a pipe explodes. We're not there when a house catches on fire, knowing how many people that you have to have, and is your equipment working? But you are. And so the thing is, is that we have to supply you with everything that you need in order for you to do your job. And it sounds like a broken record, but that has to happen. It has to happen. There's no way around it. For the 98 employees that we have making $15 an hour or less, what I want is the minimum that we paying somebody and to their max of 15. The other thing that I want to look at is, how do we bring them up? Because this is the problem that I'm having. If we have employees that can't pay their rent, they are not paying for health insurance. They're not. And I'm not saying that you come to the city of Shreveport and you work here and you get rich, but I am saying you come into the city of Shreveport, and there should be, there is a quality of life issue that is here. Because if you're going and you're coming here and you giving us 40-plus hours a week, and you can't pay your electric bill, that's a problem. And so what we have and how we have to restructure and what we're doing is overwhelmingly important to me. So those are the things to, that I'll be looking at over the next year or so, especially for those 98 or less. 'Cause I done been that person that couldn't pu-, pay your bill. I don't know about y'all, but I've been there. And it's very hard to get up and go to work every day, not knowing how you gonna make it.
Madam Chair, a couple really quick comments. One, it costs a little over a million dollars a year to give step raises for just general fund.
Okay.
It's the only comparable number. It costs about a million two to give a 3% raise in April.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, those, those, those numbers are reasonably comparable. The problem is that step raise number gets bigger the next year, because everybody will have gotten their 4%. One of the, sort of the morale thing we have to deal with is that when you give, when you just give step raises, you hadn't done anything in a while, somebody's lucky and it's February, and somebody's not lucky and it's December. And, and that becomes something of a morale issue. The other thing, I wanna make sure the council's aware, the minimum we pay any full-time employee right now is 1433 an hour.
Okay.
Y'all, y'all took care of that to some extent when, when the last big, big raise was made, and then you took care of it with us when we got rid of the two-layer pay chart where some people were making 13 and some people were making 1433.
Correct.
If you give, if, if, for instance, the proposal we gave you yesterday is adopted, we're within a quarter of $15. If you decide to set that as a minimum, make it as a policy, we can get there. That's not really a, a horrible issue to deal with, because we're close enough as it HR Director's out this week, but she and I will talk about how to deal with that. And just FYI, part of, a number of the, most of the people that, that showed up on that list are classified as crew members and refuse crew. That's really the two big ones. There are some firemen on there only because by a quirk of the schedule, they actually have a 2,900-hour year. There are some firemen on there only because by a quirk of the schedule, they actually have a twenty-nine hundred hour a year. So they show up as making twelve something an hour because of all that, but the people.
They work two hundred and forty hours a month, so that's one of the pays.
Yeah, that's what I say though, but I mean, they're actually making forty-two thousand a year because of what we pay, what we do as the supplemental stuff. And but that's, that's folks in the academy. But we can, we can get you fairly quickly. If, if you set as a policy goal fifteen dollars an hour, we can get there. Now, one of the things I've gotta do to do that is, is do something I was gonna do anyway, which was ignore some of the findings of the salary survey that I'm starting to look at that had a couple of job classes lower than that. We, if we, if we decide to set a new policy or set a new pay chart, the bottom level will be fifteen dollars. And what we will do, if, if Sharon and I can work all this out, we will figure out a way to, to see what it would cost to bring everybody above fifteen.
Correct.
And try to make it where if you've been here a while, maybe we go a step above that so that you don't make the same thing that the person who started tomorrow gets. We can, we can try to give you some handle on that. I don't think any of that is a budget breaker.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. I, I appreciate you all putting what you have put on paper for sure. Because that's the start of the continuous conversations that we, that we want to have, you know, with you all. At the same time, we want to ensure our employees for the city of Shreveport that we are listening to what you're saying. And so give us the opportunity to collaborate together. And then we can revisit this after this happens about six months. And I'm not saying six months from April first. We wanna look back this at July, look at what we doing, look at where we going, look at how, what projections that we have, how we're doing in our sales taxes, all of these things. Because we have to ensure that our employees, all of our employees are primary. The prime, just like public safety is number one, our employees, because they are what make this city operate.
Look, we're, we're, we are doing right now exactly what administrative and legislative bodies should do.
And we appreciate that.
We're talking about priorities, we're talking about trying to find out what we can do. We know what our limits are financially, we're gonna try to stretch them as far as we can, because that's what we do always. But I think bottom line, we're, we're, we are here to work with you. We are here to work on behalf of our employees, on behalf of the people who, who've gotta have medic units and garbage trucks and police cars to drive. And we didn't talk about that, but we're working on a, on a deal there that, that will help us get back in shape a little bit. It's, it's a slow and expensive process, but we'll make it work with it. So, but thank you again.
Thank you so much for the package. So let me just tell you all, or he needs to tell you all what's in the package, um, equipment package, because that's vitally important. It's for medic units.
Sixty police cars, four medic units, a tanker truck for the fire department, eight garbage trucks, four medic, sixty police cars, sixty police cars, eight, eight garbage trucks, four medic units and a tanker. And I think you have actually asked for one more that I'm still doing some research on.
Concrete truck.
Partridge and perantry.
Partridge and perantry is already in there.
Ask for a concrete truck.
And and understand, we're having to do that, we're having to do that very carefully, because you just did a certificate of indebtedness in twenty twenty-four, that you're gonna be paying for, for another several years. We're trying to feather in the payments so that there's not this big budget shock a year and a half from now.
What I'm confident of is that you will go and find that money.
Not gonna be here forever, dear.
It doesn't matter. I'm saying while you're here, you will find that money.
I'm trying.
Councilman Green.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm for everybody that works for the city to be taken care of fairly. Uh, but Mr. Dark and to the council, I'm really concerned about the ninety eight. Cause for so long, they've been faithful.
Correct.
But they've been in pain. Sometimes one would say, I've been down so long until down don't bother me. Another would say, when a runner is behind, he has to run faster to catch up. Not just fast, he has to run twice as fast. I just think that the ninety eight should not just come to fifteen, because you come to fifteen, you still been suffering for a while.
Correct.
And I just think that we should put our eyes on this ninety eight. We're gonna take care of everybody. But I just think this ninety eight who has been faithful to the city, that we should look at some way or another to bring them up. She was talking about the morale, talking about whatever. You know, if I don't have choices, you know, then I got problems. So they've been faithful here to the city, they've been working and working. And we've been promising and promising. And I just think that if we could look at the ninety eight, then I think that we could balance it out. So whatever we can do to help this ninety eight to see the light, because they've been down so long, then I think it would bless them. And not only that, it would bring up morale and it'll help other people to understand. And that, that's basically what I, uh.
Councilman, we, when, when the Director of Human Resources gets back after Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir.
We will try to figure out what might be involved in doing that.
Okay.
What some of your choices might be.
Right.
But again, to get to fifteen is not hard. What I'm trying to avoid doing is, is starting to mess with the, the sort of pay hierarchy where all of a sudden you, you've rammed those folks up into a, a level well higher. That's part of what this salary survey is trying to do for me, is trying to figure out how to do, how to get people more in line with the market. And also yet talk to the, like to talk to the department heads and say, okay, who are you having trouble hiring? Who are you having trouble keeping? And and try to balance all that in together. And and that's the thing, there's a tremendous amount of data I'm trying to start looking at right now. So it's gonna be a little while before we get there, but I think we can, we can certainly give you some numbers on, on getting folks above fifteen fairly quickly. I don't think, that, that's not gonna be anybody's budget breaker. We can, we'll try to get you some numbers and I suspect we will just move with that, but we might have to talk about details about how, how it actually happens.
And she, of course, she was talking about the merit raise. Maybe we could start with the ninety eight with the merit raise.
I'm talking about doing them before, long before April.
Okay, yeah.
In fact, actually, that would help them, because then their step would move up another three percent.
Correct.
Right.
At that, I mean, we're.
Yes, sir.
Given the numbers I think I saw the other day, where said, okay, what does it take to get from fourteen thirty-three to the nearest step above fifteen dollars? Okay, what does that take? How many folks is it? Cause we're not talking about the firemen, we're not talking about ninety eight, we're talking about, probably about seventy, I think. So, you know, we'll get you some numbers. I don't.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody there is gonna have budget problems.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Dark, um, to you and the mayor for working with the council members. And you heard us when during budget cycle, when we heard each department come up and let us know what they were missing, what their employees were needing, what they were needing as far as morale. I think the loudest message I heard was when Mr. Morgan came up. When Mr. Morgan came up, he expressed he cannot keep employees, he cannot compete with the CBL license. So that's very important during budget season, if you sit around this horseshoe and listen. I also wanna tell, um, Councilman Butcher, thank you. He has reached out to almost every council member and discussed things that we can do to make sure every employee get a raise. Or a, but I'll say, I don't even wanna call it a raise, a salary adjustment. Because as things, the prices turn, we do, we need to go over salary adjustments every year off our employees. They mean so much to us. But in the spirit of transparency and Thanksgiving, we're thankful for every employee that works here.
Correct.
But Mr. Morgan, I did hear you really loud, because we all come here and we complain about how the city looks, the cleanliness of the city. And I just wanna say, I made some comments about some contractors in my district not keeping the district clean. But I wanna know that they're listening, because those same contractors called me and said, Ms. Bowman, we only do this amount of cuts or we only pick up paper on these days. They went out on the Pines Row in another area in my district and cleaned up and didn't charge the city anything. So that means a lot to me when we have our contractors who really listen and who really care about our city. So I wanna say thank you to everybody, because the council members, we've been working together, negotiating, saying, what can we do? We listen to the employees, we're thankful for all of you. Because next week, after Thanksgiving, everybody's trash is gonna be full. So we're thankful, thank you.
Also, Madam, Madam Chair, Councilman Butcher, I'd like to thank you for the time that you spent with me on the phone talking about this and how we could do it and was I on board. And also I received a call from, uh, Councilman Telefaro on, uh, that Wednesday, I believe it was. And we talked about it and I said to him that I was on board with whatever we could do for all of our employees. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Councilman.
Mr. Dark.
Yes, sir.
Two years ago roughly, did we not pull four point five million dollars from the police budget?
Not sure I'm.
Funded, uh, funded unfilled positions.
Well, basically, what, what, what we inherited was a budget system that, that fully funded a bunch of positions that were never, ever going to be been.
Correct.
And so we, you are spending that money in other places now, including, you know, police salaries and other things. But we inherited a budget that had considerable amount of money in both fire and police that was an earmark for the positions that had not been filled in at least five to ten years. So yes, sir, that's the only thing I can think of there.
Thank you.
Mr. Dark, I, I recall that, that conversation and I don't know if I voted for it or not, I don't, I can't recall. But it was always my concern that that money would possibly not be there and it doesn't look like it's there now. You know, we moved the four point, whatever, I don't remember the exact number, I think y'all all remember what we're talking about.
I believe I added one point five million dollars back.
Back to it. I don't, that was last year.
So we pulled three million.
Was it last year that you did that?
It was two years ago.
Two years ago. So, I mean, that's why I'm working so hard to try to find, to get the ten percent that we can, because that was always my intent, not to spend that unfunded on something else and then say when we need it. Because you're talking about morale. And I know from previous jobs that I've worked, that the people that are making the least amount of money sometimes will bring the morale of the whole operation down, even if you have dedicated employees that are doing a great job. Because, I mean, you get tired of going to work and not having enough money to pay your bills and you're having to juggle stuff. So we have got to, you know, the ten percent is where I would love to be. And that's what I'm, I'm trying to, that's why, and thanks to all of y'all for taking my phone calls. We've been doing this, I think, since, uh, what about, uh, cause I met with Marcus and, uh, Lennis about, what? Month and a half ago, two months ago, to try to vet these numbers and find out where we are. And unfortunately, it's just a, it's a process. When you have an over three hundred million dollar budget, I mean, it's hard to, it, it's just hard to wrap your mind around sometimes where things are. But I will say that, that, um, it's my intent, and I've talked to everybody up here, for us to be able to give the most raise that we possibly can.
Is our budget, is our city budget only three hundred million?
Our general fund budget's a little over three hundred.
And then you have the debt services, it adds up to be about seven hundred.
About seven hundred.
Seven hundred something million.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So from here, what we're going to do, just for the general public to understand, as we look at the proposal that has been submitted by the mayor's office, the council will look at it in its entirety. We will see if there's anything that we will add to this budget, um, any incentives that we would like to offer as it relates to them. So we'll be looking at every dollar and cent that is there. So this, the mayor, what the mayor has presented is not final in that regard. Because the, the council is still looking at this in order to bring forth what it is that we want to do for our employees, what we can do that is within the parameters of the dollars that we have by December fifteenth, okay? So don't be surprised that there may be some pop-up meetings that we may have about the budget process that may fall into place before December fifteenth is concerned, because it is a priority to us, so.
And I wanna be transparent about everything we do.
Correct.
I would like for it to be in an open meeting where everybody hears, because I think we all have talked enough that we know the direction that we're going.
Right.
Now we need to get with the administration and hash it out. And I was so grateful yesterday, because I'll be honest, like I said, I've been working on this for two to three months, we all have. And I was a little discouraged, and I was so grateful yesterday at four thirty, when I got this memo from the mayor, giving us a springboard and a direction to go. And I, I'm thankful that y'all sent that to us, because now we've got a starting point and we can build upon it. So I appreciate it.
Yes. So just so you'll know, just for the media, it's not finished, okay? It's not finished. We have, still, we have enough time to deliberate on what is occurring, to see what is going to be the best possible outcome. But I will say this, because this part of it is true. What we're looking at increases, we're looking at increases for every city employee. That is inclusive of the city marshal's office. That is inclusive for those clerks or whomever it was that was left off. There may be some caps, depending on what, where your salary is, that we're looking at as well. And so we are looking for those, looking at those employees that are also not making over fifteen dollars an hour in order to increase their quality of life. That's a priority for us. So again, you may have some other special meetings that may pop up, okay? All right.
Mr. Dark, how long, how long, what part of your office back there you make the money in?
I told you last time, the printing press only prints one dollar bills, sir.
Dollars adds up, just like dimes and pennies and quarters, they all add up, okay? So like he says, fourteen thirty-three, we only need some cents. All right, thank you, Mr. Dark, is there anything else?
No, Madam Chair, that sounds like.
All right. Does any member have any questions or concerns relative to property standards for Mr. Green?
Come back, Councilman Green.
Would you check that, uh, old circle K on the corner of, uh, Jewella and Seventieth Street? They put up a fence around it and some black paper, they tore part of the fence down. And, uh, those weeds on the outside of the fence, they, some trees then grew up. If you could check that out.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Clark, do you have a master plan committee report?
And I'm gonna be extremely short, Madam Chair, since it's Friday afternoon and the weekend must begin. The consultant presented the results of the update to the master plan at their meeting this month. They will vote on the recommendation to you at their meeting in December. Once they do that, if they are voting to move forward, the consultant will come back and address the council in hopes of the council adopting the, uh, master plan amendments. I won't be here, so I won't get a raise, but, uh, I just wanted to share that with y'all, you didn't do one in twenty twenty-five, but, but in seriousness, we should have the master plan adopted if the council is in agreement with it, uh, sometime in January.
Okay.
So you won't, you won't be here.
I won't be here, ma'am. But if it gets done, that's the most important thing. And, uh, the staff is prepared to take off running in twenty twenty-six, dealing with some of the concerns that can help our neighborhoods, our communities. So everything will go fine.
Sure you don't wanna stay and get that raise?
You wouldn't do it in twenty twenty-five.
You can stay through the first quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Did everyone receive the budget to actual financial report? Public hearing there is none, Madam Clerk, will there be any legislation to be added today?
No, ma'am.
Today we'll hear public comments on non-agenda and agenda items, um, so do we have requests to speak?
Madam? Yes, Madam Chair, we do. The first one is David Hackney.
Hey, good afternoon, my name is Dave Hackney, I'm a Shreveport resident, Grayson Butcher's my councilman. I spoke here at the, uh, October twenty eighth. Butcher is my councilman. I spoke here at the October 28th meeting regarding Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority and the Red River Express, namely, the ownership. At that same meeting, and I was limited to the three minutes, Tim James spoke considerably longer than three minutes, and then Mr. Busada with the Finance Authority spoke. We had a very friendly conversation after the meeting out in the lobby. And two days later, I sent an email to Councilman Butcher and to Mr. Busada detailing my concerns and the actual wording in the CEA between the Finance Authority and Tim James. And that's really the crux of it. And three weeks had passed and no response. And I see Mr. Busada is here today. The crux of my concern is, is you have this entity that is part of the city of Shreveport that's going to finance and own this project. And Mr. Busada spoke adamantly that, no, they weren't going to own it. But I sent him the verbiage right out of his CEA and it talks about the roadway facility and the toll bridge. And collectively, those two items are the project. And the document says the authority will lease the project to the Red River Express. So, they're going to own the whole kit and caboodle, or think they are. They have assets of about $1 million and this is something like a $100 million project. I don't think it's a $100 million project. I think it's more like 200 million. They haven't quoted an accurate figure. But this is important and who's going to own it. And if this CEA is intact, then it's in conflict with the CEAs that Caddo Parish and I think Bossier Parish have. So, this needs to be more in the public. Couple other items that are totally different subject, just looking at the agenda for today. Item number 131 in Part 9 Regular Agenda Legislation, authorizing the mayor to execute an entity-state agreement between the city of Shreveport and Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. What is this about? I mean, you know, if it would have said, you know, for the intersection of such and such, or for highway, or whatever, it's left a little vague. And I'm wondering if that was intentional. And so, specifically, that 131, what is that?
Mr. Hackney.
And then the same could be said for 144, which is a Finance Authority qualifying. Is that just a generic thing or is it a specific thing?
Mr. Hackney, your time has expired. Attorney Edwards, can you answer some of the questions Mr. Hackney had?
Attorney Busada.
I can answer the one about his first thing if you'd like.
Yeah, you can have Attorney Busada to come up as well.
While he's coming up, Mr. Hackney, the city-state agreement is for lighting improvements at the Monk House Drive intersection or interchange. The state has a project to do that and that allows it to be done.
It's for lighting improvements on Monk House Drive.
Actually, at the Monk House.
Okay.
My Monk House I-20 exchange?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That's what it's for.
So, great. It's nothing controversial or whatever, but when you don't put it, when you leave it vague, open-ended, it looks like a blank check.
But that's why it's always explained when we get to the agenda item. Today is a combined meeting where we typically have work session. And during work session, what we do is that we go over each of the items on the agenda and therefore it's explained what each agenda item means.
I understand that. But when agendas come out a day ahead of time and the public reads the agenda and says, oh, that's something I'm interested in. I'm going to go downtown and go attend the meeting. If you don't know what.
Is there not a fact sheet attached to it?
I was going to ask.
Pardon me?
Is there not a fact sheet attached to it?
Tonya, are there fact sheets attached? Is there any way for, used to when we had the old system, you could click and it was a PDF and you could read it?
Yes.
Is that still available to the general public? There should be a PDF, but always, if there's a question, pick up the phone and call the clerk.
Correct.
Because, like, I got your email yesterday. I drove about 300 miles yesterday. So, it's hard for me to return an email. And then today, when you emailed me at noon, I was in Mansfield. I went from Mansfield to Bossier, from Bossier to here, and I didn't, hadn't had a chance to respond. Now, as far as the, and I'm just going to say this, like I said the other, at the last meeting when you spoke, from what Mr. Busada said, we are paying him. He is the professional. I can't answer these questions because honestly, I know about, as much about it as you do and I depend on him and this gentleman sitting to the left of me, who is the city attorney, to guide me in those directions. If it's something I think is crazy, I'll question him. I've done it on more than one occasion. But if I have no reason to question what he tells me, I'm going to always defer to them. And I, I'm sorry I didn't know. I thought when that email went out that Mr. Busada and you had talked since. And then I get your email the other day that y'all had not talked. So, Mr. Busada, if you want to get up and explain it, that'd be great.
Absolutely. And thank you for the opportunity. And I think it's a great question and I've answered it three times already in depth. One, about two months ago in a public meeting in long detail. Again, at another public meeting. And then again, we had another conversation about it. So, I'm happy to answer it another time. But at the end of the day, as we say in the law, sometimes it's asked and answered. And you can't keep answering the same thing over and over or else we wouldn't get anything done. So, let me just very, very clearly, the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority, according to state statute, according to revised statute 92341, is not the city of Shreveport. It is not controlled by the city of Shreveport. It is specifically, the city of Shreveport is specifically prohibited from inserting, asserting any control over the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority. What I, Mr. Hackney, I think, is conflating two separate concepts. The legal concept of control and ownership and liability and exposure and the Government Accounting Standards Board concept for accounting purposes. The Government Accounting Standards Board simply says that if a municipality or if a government appoints, has the appointment authority of the members of a board, then they're required in their audit to report those financials. But they are not assuming liability. They are not assuming exposure. It's called a discreetly presented component unit. And there are many of those, mainly because they have, there's got to be some place to put them. But it specifically says, state statute says multiple times, I'll give you one, public trusts are authorized, provided that no funds of said beneficiary, beneficiary is the city of Shreveport, no funds of said beneficiary derived from other sources, from sources other than the trust property, or the operation thereof shall be charged with or expended for property or for the operation of said trust except by express action of the governing authority, the beneficiary. Quite simply, it says that the government, that the Finance Authority can spend no money, has no money, has no access to money that is connected to the city of Shreveport. It goes on to say, in 92344, "Any obligations issued by a public trust under this chapter shall not constitute any debt or debts, liability or liabilities, or a loan of the credit of or a pledge of the faith and credit of the beneficiary, the city of Shreveport, of the state of Louisiana, or any political subdivision, or any governmental unit thereof, but shall be solely the obligation of the public trust." That's why public trusts were created and authorized by the legislature for the very, for the very reason that cities and parishes and other local governments don't have the ability to put, to take on that exposure and liability. And so, that was the specific purpose that these were created. And I'll end on this. This is a public trust, just like any trust you have. If I create a trust today and I put my money in the trust and I say, you know what, I want the beneficiary of my trust to be Mr. Edwards. And Mr. Edwards says, yes. I still control the trust. It just means that if something happens to me and I die, he just gets the money. And if he doesn't want the money, he just says, I don't want it. Because you don't, you get to choose. You don't, you don't have to take the liability or the money. The city of Shreveport is just the beneficiary. If the city of Shreveport chooses to take the benefit, great. If not, that's fine too. But that's what the situation is. And again, that's what I've explained multiple times.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
We don't own the property. We don't own any of the trust property.
No.
We are just the beneficiary of that property if something.
Correct.
Like the trust, like if, you know, if you have him set up in a trust and he's the beneficiary of the trust, God forbid you walk out and get hit by a city bus. You're going to sue us for that probably too. Your family will. So, the trust will even be richer. But, so basically, he doesn't own your property.
Mm-hmm.
He doesn't own, but he would be the beneficiary if something were to happen.
Correct.
But he's not on the hook for any of your debt.
Correct.
Or any of your liabilities.
Correct.
Okay.
You no more, you no more own this than the Industrial Development Board of Ascension Parish, which is a component unit thereto, owns the $5 billion Hyundai plant. It's under their name. Ascension Parish doesn't own it, just like you don't own this. It's a financing mechanism specifically set up by the legislature and it's been done all over the state for over 60 years.
So, I'm thinking, you know, I was fairly clear on that and I understand where Mr. Hackney's coming from because it's about, it can be kind of muddy and hard to understand. My suggestion, maybe Mr. Hackney, is maybe, maybe write a letter to the Attorney General and get him to give you an opinion. And then you have, or her, give you an opinion. Get an Attorney General's opinion. Anybody can do that. You can write to the Attorney General and then they can explain it in depth. And then you're getting it from a, from a second source other than the city of Shreveport.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Busada, just summarize, who, according to the CEA, is going to own the Tim James project?
The Finance Authority.
So.
Finance Authority.
Yes.
And that's a public entity?
It's a quasi-public entity. Well, no, that makes a difference.
Thank you.
No, sir, that makes a significant difference. I mean, these things, there's a reason that other states are way ahead of us when it comes to economic development because they were doing these things much, much earlier than we are. We're catching up. And so, those distinctions are extremely important and we can't gloss over them.
And I totally agree. I'm just saying, when one entity is saying this is going to be a private project and another entity is saying this is a public project, which one are we listening to?
I think.
It's a public-private partnership where the public is stepping in to be a sponsor, but it's all paid for 100% by the private entity, 100%.
I think the best course of action from this point forward, I don't know what else Mr. Busada can answer and I don't know what I can answer. I'm being very respectful. But maybe write a letter to, like I said, to the Attorney General's office and maybe they can explain it better. Because I just, I feel confident, I trust Mr. Busada. You work for how many municipalities and different entities?
Dozens all throughout the state.
And I trust Mr. Edwards in what he tells me. I mean, and I, I just don't know where else we can go other than if you write them a letter. If you would, if you do that.
And when he wouldn't respond in writing.
I got you. Copy us all, if you don't mind, in your letter to the Attorney General because I'd like to see what he has to say.
In the minutes of this meeting, we'll be in.
Gee, sorry, gee. I keep thinking about Jeff Landry still being Attorney General. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Attorney Busada.
Thank you.
Escara Hinton.
How you doing today?
Thank you.
Make this very simple, sweet. My name is Escari Hinton. I am the founder of the Blue Goose Community Development.
Mr. Hinton.
Name and address for the record.
Name and address for the record.
Escari Hinton, 2929 Hertzfield, Spring, Texas, 77373.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm the founder of the Blue Goose Community Development. Back in 1999, like 2019, my bad, I'm thinking about Prince. We created a schematic that the MPC used as inspiration to create the new MUV and the UDC. And so, basically, I would like to see if you guys would be open to giving my organization, myself and Alan Dyson, some recognition for their work. Because we paid attention to the master plan meeting and we created something that, a model that can be duplicated in any area in the United States. And so, we just want some recognition for it, basically.
Okay. Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark, I'm not, I'm not sure if any other council members are familiar with this model. So, will you be able to assist Mr. Hinton?
We will assist him in whatever ways that we possibly can. We will recognize the model that he's created, but I think he wanted the council to give some recognition of the model and its importance.
Mr. Clark, you have adopted the ordinance, Article 4, 419, in the UDC. And so, basically, you know, to help push my organization forward.
So, we would still need to get some direction from him because we're not familiar.
Okay.
With, with what it is that you all may have worked or what may be adopted. So, it'd be premature for us to say, yes, we're getting ready to do this. And we don't know what it is that, in its totality. So, Mr. Clark, if you will give us a follow-up and update this council on what that is and then we'll proceed from there.
We'd be very happy to. And it's an excellent project.
Okay.
We'll bring something to you next, next meeting.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. We have no executive appointments to consider today. There are no items under consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Madam Clerk, please proceed with regular agenda legislation.
Resolution 130, approving the 2026 DDA program of work.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Brooks. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Resolution 131, authorizing the mayor to execute an entity-state agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Resolution 132, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board to seek public bids on oil, gas, and mineral lease involving a property located in District D described herein and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Resolution 138, which will need to be postponed to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted and other charges in 2025 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion postponed by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. Discussion for the record, the organizations are Food Banks, Salvation Army.
Christian Services.
Christian Services.
Services, okay? Just so y'all know that for clarity. Let's vote.
This passes with six for postponement.
Resolution 139, this will need to be postponed as well, to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organizations for the funds budgeted and other charges in the 2025 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Move to postpone by Councilman Butcher, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with six for postponement.
Resolution 140, approving an annual payment in lieu of tax in accordance with a term sheet agreement between the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority and SR Saving LLC.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to December 9, 2025?
Resolution 141, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with LSU Board of Supervisors acting through the Louisiana State University in Shreveport for retention, preservation, and servicing of city records at LSUS. Resolution 142, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana Department of Treasury. Resolution 143, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and Carwigs and Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit of the city for the fiscal year January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025. Resolution 144, approving annual payments in lieu of tax in accordance with one or more term sheets between the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority and qualifying entities. Resolution 145, authorizing the mayor to execute a change order number three to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with the Shreveport Meters 2023 LLC to add funds to the rehabilitation budget for the AMI Water Meter Project. Resolution 146, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving a property located in District F, described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution. And Resolution 147, approving the pay scale by municipal police civil service personnel in, of the city of Shreveport.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, but I also would like to ask the author of 147, if he would like for it to be withdrawn, if my motion would include all of them with the exception of 147. Madam Chair, my motion would be that all of them would be introduced with the exception of 147.
So the motion is on the table that I will be introducing with the exception of 147?
I'll second that, and the reason for my second is, I think that there's a little bit of, we need to get some clarity, and I talked to Ms. White before the meeting, and she's running the numbers to make sure, I think we know what the issue is. Chief Wastella also has been telling me what I think the numbers are, the reasons are, and I think it's because there's no PCOs or technicians, or what was the other one? Jailers included in that. And I would like for us just to confirm that.
So, Madam Chair, why don't we leave it on the agenda and y'all just vote it down?
I just did.
He just did.
Okay.
So there's been motion and second. And our items are introduced except 147. Madam, we have no items under introduction of ordinances. Madam Clerk, please proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage.
Ordinance 137, amending the 2025 budget for the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Ordinance 138, amending the 2025 budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Taylor Farrell, second by Councilman Butcher, any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with six.
Ordinance 139, amending the 2025 capital improvements budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote. Councilman Brooks. Brooks.
This passes with six.
Ordinance 140, amending the 2025 budget for the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Ordinance 141, amending the 2025 capital improvements budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with six.
Ordinance 142, amending the 2025 budget for the Economic Development District F Special Revenue Fund.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Ordinance 143, to amend Chapter 18, Article III, Division III, concerning abandoned aircraft.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher, any discussion? Let's vote.
Get rid of the planes.
Gotta get rid of those planes out there, huh?
I don't want my turkey to burn.
Airport light.
Councilman Taylor Farrell. Taylor Farrell.
Shall I?
And this passes with six.
Ordinance 144, amending Chapter 38.5 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances-
So moved.
Relative to environmental court fines.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote. It's Friday. This is the fines you double.
And this passes with six.
Ordinance 145, to amend Section 66-141 of Chapter 66 of the Shreveport, of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to contributions of full-time and active employees and retirees.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Madam Clerk, we'll read ordinance 146 through 151, all in the record before asking for the postponement.
Ordinance 146, declaring certain paint and equipment acquired with federal community development block grant funds as surplus and authorizing their disposal or donation to qualified nonprofit organizations subject to conditions. Ordinance 147, amending the 2025 budget for the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 148, amending the 2025 budget for the Healthcare and Technology Innovation District East Special Re- District East Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 149, amending the 2025 budget for the Healthcare and Technology Innovation District West Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 150, amending Chapter 74 of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 151, a series ordinance pursuant to the General Fund Ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $190 million of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds in one or more series of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the General Fund Ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms and conditions of said bonds, authorizing the use of preliminary official statement, and for the preparation and distribution of an official statement, authorizing the purchase or subscription for certain escrow securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of escrow agents, and authorizing execution of delivery of paying agent registrar agreement and providing for other matters in connection therewith. All of these will need to be postponed.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion postponed by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher, any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the 2026 budget ordinance from, to be removed from the table and put on the, on the agenda for November the night, I mean, December the night.
So we have a motion on the table?
Second.
Second by Councilman Butcher, any discussion?
Madam Chair, Ms. White, when do we need to have our budget amendments to ye by?
December 8.
So, I don't, this, these raises for employees, I don't want us to, and I don't think we will, but I wanna go on the record to say that between now and the 8th, we need to, we're gonna have to get busy and get something together. I think that any pay plan would need to be done, in my opinion, on that agenda, as well as an amendment to the budget for anything that we do at that point. And I also would like to say that I think I agree with Chairman Taylor, Chairman woman Taylor on this, that, that as we grow, and there's some really good things on the horizon for the city, there may be even more than we might be able to do right now in the months to come. I've spent a lot of time on the phone with Mr. Busada about projects that could be ongoing. I've spent a lot of time, you know, looking at possible sales tax revenue going up due to the fact of maybe some government's surplus coming in to people for tariff relief at some point. So I think that we'll have a little bit better idea six months down the road than we do right now. But still, I don't wanna kick that can down the road. So thank you.
You're welcome. Let's vote.
This passes with six.
Decisions have been removed from the table. Madam Clerk, is there any other table legislation to be removed from the table today?
No, ma'am.
We have no property standards or ABO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC, ZBA appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Dark, do you have any additional communications?
The only thing I was gonna say is in regard to amendments, because when you're, when you're doing stuff with pay, there are lots of funds involved. So even if we simply implemented the one we gave you yesterday, there are amendments, there are a lot of amendments to be done, and I mean, we'll have ours, you know, the skeletons of them working, but the sooner we know if there's going to be a difference, the better it would be to make all that happen.
I can be here Thanksgiving morning about 8:00 if anybody wants to work through.
I'll be, I'll be joining you by Zoom, I promise.
Does any council member have any additional communications? Tanya, I will call you from the classic. Not southern classic, but the bayou classic.
Go Tigers.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Executive session, there is none, if there is nothing else.
I gotta wish my people happy Thanksgiving.